...to order and ask you all to please stand at the invocation from Brother Eddie Gooch at New beginning's Fellowship Church and that remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. We thank you, our heavenly Father, through your son, Jesus, for our gathering tonight, for reminding us, dear Lord, from the children who sang about our present and future generations to come. And we thank you, Lord, for those who are in attendance tonight, for your wisdom and peace. Thank you for those, Lord, who are in authority over us and our mayor, our city council, our police officers, our first responders and firefighters. And, Lord, your holy word, Psalm ninety-one, on behalf of our military. We love you and we thank you and we praise you for all things, but thank you most of all for the gift of your son, Jesus, in whose blessed, holy, and saving name, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
We have a special guest. It's Adeline Stringfeller. She's a second grader from Kidney Stone, and she's going to lead our pledge tonight.
Welcome, Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you so much. Parents, can you play your picture?
She's got to get her candy first. Thank you, Adeline.
Good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we got, uh, we're signing up.
You gonna say how, why, how we got her?
Yes, we, uh, we went to the orientation at the elementary school. We had students to sign up that wanted to say the pledge, so that was just an easy way to reach, reach them. So, we did. Had a great turnout and we should have, see some new faces this year.
Tony, it was a great idea.
Yeah, I wonder if he came up with that idea.
But she's very smart. Who's her bud?
Yeah, okay.
And did you say that they weren't too interested until they found out they could be on YouTube?
Yeah, I told them they gonna be on YouTube and they said, yes!
Their bud was kind of just shy and didn't think they wanted it, and then Sherry would say, well, now, it'd be on YouTube. Oh, yes, I'll look it up.
All want to be influencers.
I know there's one special person signed up to top the list.
She had seen you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. A Green?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Laster?
Here.
Mr. M Green?
Here.
We'll go into item five. That's the work session part of our, our meeting tonight, and item A is acceptance of the minutes. Any questions, comments, uh, about the minutes that was sent out? Conferes me?
No.
None? None? Thank you, Brenda. Uh, item B is the non-fratization policy, and I think that's a HR. I'm not gonna say fratization again. That, that's it.
Okay. No more research since last time. So, I wanted to maybe explain why we felt we needed this. It safeguards the professional integrity of the city, that we hire professionals, we act professional, and we want the public to know that. It mitigates legal risk that could come up from something, a relationship, or somebody didn't want a relationship and someone did, so that would lead to harassment. It could lead to harassment. Um, I think we've gone through enough of that, so that was another great reason why we chose, um, uh, to pick up this policy. Do y'all have any questions about it? We just want to maintain peace, as much peace as we can. I know, haha. Um, it's, it's just not a good idea to date someone in the same department you're in. You know, what if there's a bad breakup, or, you know, relationships can be crazy. So, we just think it's a good idea not to allow that.
Any questions?
That one's good.
Just thank you, our Lord.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George.
Uh, item C is any other business? I have one thing, if you don't mind, let me go first, 'cause it's my fault that it wasn't on the work session bottom, 'cause I forgot to do so. Uh, we have the newly elected vice president of the Jacksonville Arts Council. Did I say that correctly?
No.
So, thank, so thank you. Uh, she has something she wants to present to the council. Please.
All right, so, thank you. The arts council, as you know, we do Fair on the Square, and we do Christmas Village each year, as well as our children's and our senior programs. But one thing we talked about with Bryce Lafferty at JSU, he's one of their art professors, was doing something called a Holiday La-Da-La-Daiga Lights event. And he made the mistake of sharing it with me, and, well, here we are. So, what we would like to do, and we want to start relatively small this year, so we were thinking about doing it just for one and a half mile stretch from La-Daiga Landing to the historic Train Depot. And basically, we would have lights and we'd have an event at the Train Depot where people could come in, take pictures with Santa, get some hot chocolate, cider, little treats, and we have a trackless train that we have worked out with PARD to be able to take people down that ride, so they can walk it or they can ride it. Now, I've worked a lot with Belinda to figure out what dates are available, 'cause as you know, Train Depot is very desirable. People like to look at it at Christmas time. So, the dates I've got up there, I gave you all a handout, would show you the dates that are available and are currently tentatively held, pending your approval. We looked at charging five dollar entry for the Train Depot and a ride, or they could do eight dollars for unlimited rides. So, again, very small cost, we're not looking to make a huge profit, maybe just cover some of the expenses. We're hoping this draws in residents as well as visitors and grows from year to year, because at the bottom, at the end of the, this is starting small this year, but next year, everything we purchase will still have and we can grow, so each year we can go a little bit bigger. And then next year, we've spoken with JSU, you know, they're, while they're not yet in their new fiscal budget, they are excited to learn more about it, and we hope to include their campus portion of La-Daiga Trail next year, and depending on how this goes. We've also spoken with Chief Wood, and he is very excited about, you know, helping ensure security, having some officers on the trail during that portion. It'd be in the evening, so it wouldn't cut into, you know, public access to the trail at all. And we, we want something Jacksonville to be an attraction point and not always have to leave. Now, these are mock-up images. These are not what the actual images would look like. Obviously, we don't have anything, um, purchased as of yet. We have spoken to Janice at PARD. She's a hundred percent on board. She's even talked about when some of the workers could help put up lights, and that would be the week prior to Thanksgiving, because right before Thanksgiving, they're doing the city's decorations. She also talked about if, um, this is something that the city was willing to help fund, a possible way of doing it that might be a little easier is just as a line item under PARD designated specifically for this, so all purchases would run through them versus writing a check to us, and then we have to turn around and give it back to purchase it through city, you know, accounts. Um, so whatever, you know, y'all felt was best, if y'all did want to move forward, you know, we're flexible with that. We are also going before the county commission tomorrow to ask them to also help be a sponsor, and we've spoken to them at length, and they are very excited, but we want to make sure the city's on, on board first, and obviously, Commissioner Patterson, La-Daiga Landing is his special project, so he's excited about something being done there. We are actually requesting for five thousand dollars, and Janice's main concern was to order as soon as possible, because the closer you get to Christmas, the harder it is to get things, and the prices tend to go up. So, if it is something y'all are willing to help us do, that is our request to start this program for this year. And then obviously, we want to, we want to grow it every year. We don't want this just to be a one-time thing, and, you know, maybe at some point, others will be just going in, but it would be something that needs to be here in Jacksonville. So, do you have any question?
What did you say? We start from the Train Depot to?
To La-Daiga Landing. You could actually start at either point you wanted to, so that would help with parking. You'd have two different, you know, parking areas, and regardless of where you started, you know, you could just pick up the train, or you could choose to walk it.
How many people will the train owe?
It depends on which train we end up going with, so, um, but we're looking at twelve, twenty? It's not a huge train, because you don't want massive amount of people, and the larger trains are going to be a lot more expensive, and if you want to give me a lot more money, I'm fine, going with a larger train, but I was trying to be a little conservative.
Do you, how many volunteers you think you might need per?
We're gonna need quite a bit, and that's one thing that Mr. Lafferty is really working at with JSU and the arts council, and we didn't want to move forward without your approval, but once, you know, we have that, then that's something we would really start communicating to the community and getting more people involved.
Can you incorporate the elementary school and the high school as far as art, we're helping decorate the?
I would have no problem with that. That would, obviously, you know, I could be happy to talk to.
The, the arts teacher?
And board and get them and figure out who the right contacts would be for that.
So, would, would y'all, anything be inside the Train Depot?
Yes, we would definitely like to have that. What we'd like to do is maybe have ten or so trees, get local businesses to sponsor trees, so each business could sponsor trees, decorate it, and as people come in, they almost get a tour of trees, they have Santa Claus, obviously decorate inside as well.
Would these trees stay, trees stay throughout the season, because you don't win?
We would move them for re- reserved dates, and we've already spoken, um, with Belinda about that, and we have an area set up, because I know, like, someone has the Train Depot reserved for a wedding. We don't want our stuff in there, so we would definitely move it out for that, but it would stay other than that.
Is this on the, to vote on tonight, or are we just?
No, if we want to do something with this, we can kind of just give her an unofficial, we're okay with it, because it's not a, something to vote on, that's, we can add it to the PARD budget.
Uh, yeah. That's what I was trying to figure, is this a PARD request, or is this an arts council request?
This is an arts council request. It's not run through PARD.
But it's not in the outside agency request, I'm guessing it's in there. Okay.
Janice was just saying, if that simplifies things, then she could be happy for it to work like that. We're flexible regardless.
I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
Yeah.
Oh, I love it, I love the idea.
Look at all these volunteers you got.
One, two, three, four, all right.
I want to drive the train.
Sold, sold!
I think you've got an unofficial yes, so we'll look through at our budget process and see what we can do to add. Thank you, uh, thank you for your new position. Thank you for getting started.
Wonderful presentation.
And is this on this? Do you have something to say or something else?
On this.
Okay. No, thank you, Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I neglected to recommend that we move this policy to the agenda for approval.
It's ready?
It's in room.
I got it.
Yeah.
I thought I said the name.
I thought so. All right. Thank you, thank you for coming in. I got that. All right, uh, any other business?
Sir?
How are you today, sir?
I'm well. Uh, council, mayor, thank you for having me here. My name's Campy Antsy. I'm the police chief in Rainbow City. Um, I'm also on the committee for accreditation through our, uh, chiefs association. Uh, and to not, that's what I'm here for. A few months ago, Jacksonville Police Department, uh, reached out and wanted to be an accredited agency, one among the, uh, the first in the state of Alabama, and I was actually one of the assessors that came down and did the assessment for their accreditation, and I just want to let you guys know that they passed that with flying colors, their policies, procedures, manuals, absolutely looked fantastic. Y'all have a great chief, y'all have a great staff. Um, so, uh, what this certificate basically says, now, this is just a piece of paper, but what the statement behind that is, is that Jacksonville Police Department has chosen not to, not to go just to the minimum standards. They have chosen to go beyond that. They, they have chosen to be an exceptional law enforcement agency, and that they are. So, I would like to proudly present this to, uh, and you guys.
So, we appreciate the council for coming down, and I'm, I can't take all the credit for it, but, uh, I was commanding, as you see back here, uh, they did a bunch of this work and made sure that our policies, uh, were in place and done that work, along with our other staff and police officers. They did an exceptional job on, uh, reading those policies, acknowledging them, passing the test, and doing the body of work that made this all come together. Um, and so, I, you know, just like to give credit to them, and also thank you guys for providing us the funds to go with the Lexapro that helped us accomplish this, and, uh, so we look forward to doing this over the next five years and, and then doing our accreditation during that period. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Can we get you and your staff and all of them just to maybe here so we can get a quick picture from Ben, is he there and ready to go?
He's, he's coming down here. Go on down, go on down. They need to move that a little bit.
Yep. Move it first down a bit.
There you go. Perfect. There it is, perfect. All right. Here it comes. Three, two, one. Gotcha. Thanks. Oh, thank you.
This is a birthday party, y'all. Let all the moms. One, two. Thank you.
All right.
Good job.
I don't know if my wife tells me.
Thanks, Chief. Congrats, Chief.
Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
You have your business card.
Okay, is there any other business except for the council doing this work session? Seeing here now, we'll move on to the actual council meeting, but item six, and that's the adoption of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second. I'm sorry, did we, did I skip ahead?
Skip motion.
I forget. Two, seven. Yes, we are still in the work session. That was my, that's been my fault for trying to get ahead of the thing. Uh, we, if you, as you are aware, we had a special called meeting last week concerning , uh, the closure of Brothers Bar. Uh, I think they was looking to see if we might change their minds on, on, uh, actually allowing, uh, alcohol license for them to open up. Uh, thanks, thank you, Brenda, 'cause I had forgotten to ask what the council's opinion is on that, that we can just stay where we were, is there any discussion we want to be brought up, uh, any changes you want to be made? Uh, this is time to basically bring it up and talk amongst themselves and this private group. So, is, is my understanding here in, I think we were okay with the original, uh, vote to, to not allow the liquor license for Brothers Bar?
Do you want to move the pictures?
If you want to show them, if you want to add to it, but, I mean, that's, the, well, that, would the pictures change your mind, or?
No.
Think those pictures would change anyone else's mind? All right.
I don't mind seeing pictures if there's pictures. I don't know what pictures we're talking about here.
There, well, she presents them, she'll need to show them to everyone.
Oh, okay.
Uh, just debris, debris and stuff around that, when she was a business owner there, that she had the.
I thought this was something new.
And the PARD running into?
Yeah, PARD. So, if there's no change, anyone's changing their mind, there'll be no action taken, we'll move forward with, uh, not allowing Brothers Bar to open up and type of liquor licenses. We good?
Yeah.
Good? We good? We good? Thank you for a reminder. Thank you for keeping me in line. So, now, uh, we'll move on to item six. Item six is the adoption of the minutes. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Item seven is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or additions?
We do have one addition. To the consent agenda, add item fourteen, purchases over seventy-five hundred. Item two, PARD, A is ten thousand five hundred to Littleton Electric Services Incorporated, for replacement of pole on public squares, ensure its reimbursement.
I have a question. Were we adding that non-frat?
Yes.
I didn't know we were doing it tonight. I thought we were going to do it next time.
I thought that's what, I mean, we can wait, but I thought that's what Joy asked when she came up, go ahead and.
Yeah, and my, I said, yes, I've got it for next time.
Okay, that's fine. Next time's fine.
Is that okay? I mean, I can, but I didn't do it.
Whatever, whatever's made with you.
We'll wait. If he's okay to wait.
Well, I get a reading. I'm getting a reading that we need to go ahead and do it from HR.
If you can.
Take a moment.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what was said.
Your consensus, go ahead and, before, let's go ahead and add it.
I thought you needed on books.
Yeah, yes. Should, should possibly.
Before you talk amongst yourselves, why?
That's all right.
They ever got something on the board?
I don't think so.
My class says my time, my time, I think, what time starts with the drive?
I don't have time for any necks. They're probably.
[laughing].
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't. [inaudible].
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They ever got something on the board? I don't think so. My class says my time, my time, I think, what time starts with the drive?
I don't have time for any necks.
If I'm.
[laughing]. Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage. Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
And I don't know, because I didn't.
Do you think some recommendations, and they give them coverage?
They do some recommendations, and they give them coverage.
Exactly.
So, to the main agenda, add item twelve A, consider action to approve the new non-frat
ization policy to the city of Jacksonville's policy and procedural manual.
All right. Is it? Do I have a motion to sub the?
So moved.
Amendment?
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item A is public comments concerning any agenda items. This is your time to address the council on anything that's just got approved on this current agenda. Walk up to the podium, please, state your name and address, make sure you get the city department before you leave. Does anyone like to address the council at this time? Agenda items, you'll have an opportunity, this is for agenda items, you will have an opportunity toward the end of the meeting to speak, sir. I'm sorry, I was going to let you know that. All right, seem no one else come forward, we'll move on to item nine.
Consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seventy dash twenty-five, to close and vacate a section of Reynolds Street Northwest between Cardinal Lane Northwest and Tullam Road South. Receive first reading on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item ten.
Consider action to approve JPWP number twenty-five dash one thirty-seven, Highway two oh four, gas and water relocation, per the attached.
So moved.
Second. A motion and second, any discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item eleven.
Consider action to approve JPWP number twenty-five dash one thirty-nine, replacing the floor in the meeting room at the Train Depot per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and two seconds, any discussion?
I know that when this got submitted, there was not a date that was determined, I know we talked about the Train Depot just a little while ago. As far as disruption, I don't know if that's considered or not, but for anybody who has it scheduled or... That probably would take the better part of the day. I would imagine. I don't know if that can, if that work is around anything that's scheduled in there already, and with these dates being intended to be held, I don't know when that work would begin.
I'll call them first thing in the morning, they ready to start.
Things that've been scheduled in there have been moved, our council. I think it's about three or four that's moved. Exchange Club, I know is moving all their meetings to the community center, so... I think we've looked ahead for a month, and it's not here. I think, I think everything for another month.
Okay.
I may be off on that.
I just noticed it didn't have a determined time on completion, so...
They threw everything through September, so everything through August is clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Not hearing none. Roll call please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item twelve.
Consider action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the Waterworks Gas and Sewer Board to sign the reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on private or public right-of-way with the Alabama Department of Transportation, JPWP number twenty-five dash one thirty-seven, highway two oh four, gas and water relocation per the attached.
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item twelve A.
Consider action to approve the new non-fractonization policy to the city of Jacksonville's policy and procedural manual.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item thirteen.
Consider action to approve the promotion of the following, Joseph Paul Gonato, Equipment Operator Two in Skriek Department, effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, due to the resignation of Russell Burgess.
So moved.
A motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and several seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item fourteen, consent agenda.
Item fourteen is purchases over seventy-five hundred dollars, item fifteen is request to attend conference training session with costs exceeding one thousand dollars. Item sixteen, disposition of surplus property.
Alright, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item seventeen is public comments for any general item, this is your opportunity to come and address the council. Please, if you come up, state your name and address, make sure you get the city clerk before you leave.
Shedrick Ridley, seventy-nine Knoxville Lane, Oxford, Alabama. I kind of noticed, we kind of breezed through the Brothers Bar part. I kind of heard you mention something about some pictures of some trash and running into a building. So I just wanted to get a little more clarification of why the council is denying our request.
This is not necessarily a question and answer period, but if you want to meet with me after the meeting, we can, we can discuss this one.
But you said you had pictures of trash and, I'm just trying to understand, you said...
Yeah, the pictures of trash, in my opinion, had nothing, or I think our opinions had nothing to do with the decision that was made. The meeting, so yeah.
Am I allowed to know what the, what it is, what is?
The decision?
Yeah.
The, yeah, the original decision, when what was voted on, I don't remember the date of the meeting, was to not, not allow, not approve the liquor license for Brothers Bar.
Right, but we're asking, are we allowed to know why?
I'm really going beyond, but I will answer these questions the best as I can. You know, as, as you're aware, we've received a lot of documentation from Aaliyah and ABC Board and our own police staff. I think it's our due diligence, I can understand yourself, it is our due diligence to go by the people that we consider having the technical expertise and follow what their suggestions about moving forward for the safety of the citizens of Jacksonville. Chief, does there anything you'd like to add to that?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Marita Watson, Mayor Smith and Councilman Green and Councilwoman Lester and Councilman Taylor and Councilman Wilson and Councilman Green. First of all, on behalf of Dr. Barber, he couldn't, he wanted to, me to express his apologies for not being here tonight, he had a longtime friend that had passed and he's intending to wake, or, or he would be here himself. But we, Jacksonville City Schools, wanted to express our appreciation to you for participating, first of all, sending your greetings to all of our teachers for in-service, that was a big hit, as well as greeting the students the first day of school, really appreciated that. I also wanted to mention that, you may know that Ms. McCollum's, our social worker, had written a grant to provide food, groceries for a hundred, about a hundred families in the city of Jacksonville in collaboration with JCOC and Birmingham Food Bank. The last distribution of groceries will be next Tuesday, August the nineteenth, at JCOC. And we would appreciate any volunteers, any help in helping with that distribution of groceries, we really do appreciate that. And appreciate the city being involved and participating in that. Jacksonville City School is very blessed to have a close working relationship with the mayor and the city council, and we appreciate all you've done for the schools and all you've done for us. Okay, that's me as board member. Okay. My name is Marita Watson, I'm a member of the Jacksonville Meals on Wheels Board of Directors, and I want to express our appreciation for the donations, monies that the city is giving Meals on Wheels annually. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marita.
Okay.
Marita.
My, next.
Okay.
My name is Marita Watson.
You got another hat?
Okay, thank you. Just want to mention that February, February fourteenth, nineteen sixty-nine, we'll never forget that date. My sisters and I were at school, my parents were not at home, and during that day, that day, our house burned to the ground. Nothing. Nothing was saved. No family pictures, no, no mementos, no clothes, nothing. So I understand the devastation of a house fire firsthand. And I want to thank the Fire Department for their due diligence and helping. When I messaged them and I said, I've got some smoke detectors I need to have installed in my house, they were there. And I want to thank Chief Cadel and the staff for doing that for me, and I really do appreciate that as a citizen of Jacksonville. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else like to address the council on any general item? Because your opportunity to discuss. Seeing no one come forward, I'm sorry, you just barely made it.
Sorry, sorry. I'm actually not, I don't live in Jacksonville, I live in Anniston, John Keter, seven ten Kirkwood Avenue. I can't speak on any official account, but I feel like everyone probably knows about the situation that Giovanna Hernandez is dealing with. She's a beloved member of, I believe the group is HICA, you know, working to help people get citizenship the right way. And she's been dealing with that in her own way for a long time, is dealing with the system that, she was actually dealing with the program, as far as I know, she was dealing with a program that got canceled early this year. And I know this happened in Leeds, she's a citizen of Leeds, but she is a two-time graduate of Jacksonville State University, and I feel like an important member of the community. And I know there's not anything really y'all can do, but I feel like some sort of statement might be important for her and, and people that care about her and love her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Brittany Ridley, my address is eighteen thirty-five Abbott Avenue, Anniston. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. It appears to me that the decision for the denial of the liquor application was predetermined from the initial council meeting to tonight's meeting. I know we met for the appeal meeting last Thursday. If there wasn't going to be additional discussion, I would think we could have came to that decision last Thursday. Fast forward to this evening, we almost conveniently forget to get added to the written agenda. You know, personally, and I'm just speaking for myself, I have very little respect for the chief of police. There was a comment made referencing me at the initial council meeting stating that I can't just take off my managerial hat. Well, if you ask me, you can't just take off your duty to protect hat, you know, when it comes to certain businesses. You know, there seems to be some sort of personal vendettas that have, you know, very little to do with me. It seems that we're reacting on biases or emotions versus, you know, factual evidence. This has been the same owner, same business owner, other tenants, and, you know, suddenly there's isolated issues, you know, that pose a risk at any business. So I just wanted to mention and remind you that you all will be hearing from my attorney.
My name is Alexis Talbert, fifty-two ninety-four Crown Chase Parkway, Hoover, Alabama. In regards to the denial for Brothers, Brittany has a career of her own, a great career, better than mine, and I, you know, she's half my age or whatever. So she's very capable of funding this business herself, because I think there were some questions of her father backing the business. But as a parent, and a parent that has a student at Jacksonville, even my own parents, I'm forty-two years old, anything that I do that my parents see value in, they're going to back it. I do theater. It's nothing for my parents to support anything that me or any of my other five siblings have done. My brother played ball at Jacksonville, standout quarterback. It's nothing that my parents will not do to back him, to see him succeed, when he was inducted into the Hall of Fame, there's nothing that they won't do. So you're saying that he's the backer, but I don't know what parent wouldn't support their kid, and whatever they feel is of value. I also think that, like Brittany said, I think it's a personal vendetta against Shedrick. I don't, I really can't determine where the vendetta is coming from, I have my thoughts, it could possibly be true, could possibly not be true. I do understand safety. As I mentioned at the hearing, you know, Birmingham PD has a side job insurance that guarantees officers are placed in these establishments. Even in Hoover, it's nothing for Hoover PD to be scattered amongst different businesses, just even in the restaurants to add the protection. So, you know, I, Hoover is one of those all or nothing cities, and I think that may be the same case here with Jacksonville. You know, even with the denial for Brittany, what can be done to operate the business? Because it's kind of like y'all are trying to tell the building owner what he can and cannot do, even if he wants to rent it out to people for parties, there's like restrictions on that as well, like it can't be done. So I guess at this point, what, what can be done? That, that's the question, what can be done? Even if she, she's, she's the tenant, but even if she doesn't rent it, you're still trying to control what, how he can operate. Or just lease the, like, he pays a leasing license every year, lease to others. So if he's leasing it out, it doesn't matter who it is, how does that, I mean, it's like contradictory to me. So I don't know if that's some further discussion that we could have after the meeting, but it's just kind of like, you're just trying to tell, like, you can't, you got this business, this building that you own, and you can't do anything with it. So, those are just my personal thoughts.
Thanks, ma'am. Make sure she has her name, ma'am, make sure she has her name, ma'am. Anyone else? Last call, anyone else? Alright, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to council member remarks. Anyone have anything?
I had fun at the elementary school Thursday and Friday morning, walking the kids back with all of our guys and council. It's, it's an uplifting event to see the kids get out of the car, a lot of them are smiling, and there'll always be one or two that, probably like I was, I didn't want to go, so... But they did, the teachers, the teachers and faculty and staff are great, I'm telling you, they, they, they've got a handle on how to handle the kids, and that goes back to the board and what they train, but it was, it was a lot of fun, I had a good time, and then when we went to the in-service or whatever that day, that was also, and I agree with Tommy, you should have heard the cow song.
I think it's the moose song.
Moose song, it's a cow, moose.
Anyone else?
Moose song.
Yeah, tomorrow is the, it's called city, celebrate city hall selfie day on August the twelfth, that the, that the League of Municipalities does every year. So the encouragement is for everyone in the community to take a picture or a selfie in front of your city hall, and we have a beautiful city hall here that we can do, so I look forward to seeing the mayor's picture. Yeah. But anyone is, everyone's encouraged to take their picture in front of your city hall, wherever you live, and celebrating city hall is where city business happens. And this week ahead of, I know the mayor probably has all the back-to-school things for, maybe some more of those, but in Jack State, starting just next week, but tomorrow, or excuse me, Wednesday, the thirteenth, is considered to be the fall move-in day. Other groups have moved in, obviously, as the end of the summer has gotten here, other groups, but from my recollection of looking at, at that, most of the apartments will be moving in on the thirteenth. And then starting on Thursday through the weekend is when you will get the majority of moving in. So a lot more persons in and about the city of Jacksonville navigating their way, so I know that public safety is, is prepared for some of that, as is the campus, but the city being aware that there'll be some folks here that are new, so... Excited to welcome all of those first-year students into campus and those who are returning, maybe they're not here for as long as some of us took, but... As long as they're here, we welcome them, right? Yeah.
Hopefully they eat my gas.
Well, I know, I know that they absolutely will.
Alright, if there's nothing else, mayor's report?
Thank you very much, just a few dates and things coming up, I remember these folks have organized the mayor's ride, they invited me to be a part of that. Many others may want to be a part of, so you'll see the timing up there, eight AM this next Saturday morning, we starting to ride at, where are we starting to ride? Community Center, thank you, it's up there.
You confer?
On a bicycle.
On a bicycle.
You confer when you will be there?
I'll be there. I'm going to ride from the parking lot to the trailer back.
Don't let him fool you, he's already practicing. I've seen him out in the streets and run his bike.
Another thing to remember is upcoming event, Addict Sugar will be performing on at five PM on the seventeenth, which is Sunday afternoon, I believe, if I can't remember the day he's right. So put that on your calendar, come out and listen to a little music on the square.
Community Center.
Community Center. And then on Spread on Mountain Street is coming up, that's the twenty-first of August, starting at six PM, and I think everybody's familiar with that, it's a great, great event for the city and university. And I don't know if the event's been named yet, Aaliyah, who's, who's coming?
I believe that's going to come out in the morning.
Okay, great. They always have a great performance, a lot of good food, and it's just a great event for the city and, and the university. And remind you, August twenty-sixth is your opportunity to cast your vote, so put that in your calendar and make sure you get out and vote on that day. And that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Is there any other businesses that come forth, council? Hearing none, move on to item, anyone?
Consider action to enter into an executive session under provisions of the Code of Alabama, section thirty-six dash twenty-five A dash seven A six, to discuss the consideration the governmental body is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, release of market value of real property.
So moved.
A motion do I have a second? Motion and a second. Discussion, as most times, we will not be returning to, back out here to the council, we'll be adjourning from the executive session, so I want to thank you all for being here. Anything else?
No.
Hearing no one else, roll call please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Once again, thank you all for being here, great crowd, be safe.